Good evening. Today is Monday, June 10th, and it's 5:30 PM, and we're beginning our regular work session. And we will start out with Mr. Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. The city received approximately a dozen calls related to localized flooding that occurred in different areas of the city. Due to last night's thunderstorm at the airport, a maximum rainfall intensity of .86 inches per hour was reported. While most of the flooding reported was limited to the street, there was at least one report of a building on Northern Avenue that received some flooding. The stormwater division responded to the calls received to assist conditions and prioritize repairs. Maintenance crews will continue to work clearing inlets and removing obstructions from the pipes. If citizens have any stormwater maintenance concerns, they can contact the stormwater division at 719-553-2899, or by email at stormwater@pueblo.us. Arkansas River activities restricted, the Pueblo Fire Department, the Pueblo County Sheriff's Office, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife announced today restricted use of the Arkansas River from the Pueblo Dam to the Pueblo County, Otero County line due to the dangerously fast flowing and high water on the river. Activities prohibited on the river at this time include recreational swimming and use of any single chambered air inflated device to include inner tubes, inflatable mattresses, and inflatable rafts. Whitewater canoes and kayaks violators will be cited. And Dillon Drive closure, the city of Pueblo began sewer line repair and replacement on Dillon Drive beginning Monday, June 10th, which will have major impacts to pedestrians, drivers, and citizens of Pueblo. This is the beginning phase of the Dillon Drive paving project, which is anticipated to be completed by end of July or early August. A .16 mile segment of Dillon Drive between North and South entrance to Walmart will be closed for approximately three weeks. All businesses along the route remain open and accessible through alternate routes. Drivers are encouraged to utilize I-25 and exit 102. Public transit stops remain accessible for bus transportation access to the Walmart parking lot along the route. For more information, call Public Works at 719-553-2295, or check the Pueblo City website and social media. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any questions from council? Councilor Flores?
You know, I don't really have a question, but a request, and that is that there's always been a really dangerous spot along the Arkansas River, irregardless of at what level there is. But the Board of Waterworks has been working on a major project in that area. And I think they're close to being finished, and it's going to be an area, kind of a recreational area that's going to be accessible to the citizens where they can actually walk around certain areas right up against the river. But it's all going to be safe. It's not going to, there was a dam there that would actually suck people in into the stream, and they couldn't get out. So I bet over the last 50 years, there's been a handful of drownings in that area. But what I'd like to request is that somewhere down the line be given an update or a completion, because I think they've been working on this for a while. In fact, Seth Clayton had made a major presentation to us about a year ago, and they've been working on this project, and it's really going to be a nice area. And it may not be that closely tied to what's happening now because of the rain. And I understand that they're emptying the dam too into the river, so there's all kinds of major things going on. But somewhere like in July and August, maybe the Pueblo Border Waterwork and Seth Clayton can either update us that they're close to finishing how it looks now. I just liked a report, and I think the citizens would get an update too on a telegraph night.
Yeah, I could set that up, and I'll check this week and just kind of give you a progress report on it too, because I know it's coming along. And a lot of people are excited for it.
Excuse me, Mr. McCain, isn't there also a resolution tonight expanding on the Riverwalk Trails? And the park down, the water park down below over towards the downtown two bridges? It seems like there's a resolution for $50,000 for a design study. So we'd be expanding on top of that?
It's the master plan that the Conservancy District is paying $75,000 for. The Parks Department had a little bit in their budget, but the other $50,000 we were able to take out of some ARPA funds that we had left over. And it's going to be for the low head dam, all the way down, that whole recreation area for the master plan. Counselor, I don't know if you remember, but they had come and presented a little bit about it. Last year, Counselor Martinez, Crane Kaler, and Stephen Meyer had come and presented a little bit about it. So this is now getting the plan ready.
Yeah, I was just expanding off of the question that Counselor Flores was asking as far as what was the status of the low head dam project?
I think it's going to be finished in September. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anyone else from council have anything to say? Mayor Graham? Can we get an update on available ARPA funds? What you clawed back? What we've spent of that clawback and where we're at? The balance of the ARPA funds left?
Yeah, sure.
And would that be something that would qualify for Counselor Gomez's motion noise?
Sound cameras?
Sound cameras?
Absolutely. Yes, I think there's a little less than half a million dollars still left after these last couple projects come through. So yeah, with the clawback that we did of like the 350.
Yeah, I know you were looking for money for your sound cameras, and if those are qualified through ARPA funds, I think you should put the request in.
Well, I'll make a reference to that in my commentary, because I got new numbers that I'm able to figure out, so I'll mention it.
Yeah, there's a source for you. Okay.
I'll get that for you Wednesday afternoon, because we have ARPA Wednesday morning, so Brian will send that out to you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next, we're going to go into council policies, procedures, and administrative assistant. And Mr. Gifford has been working on this. It was a takeoff from the council retreat. And so we have some things that we are going to decide whether we're going to move forward with.
That's correct. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Thank you for that introductory statement. That's exactly what we're doing today. Some of these proposed amendments began prior to Ms. Sykes' term as city attorney. Some of them along the way have resolved themselves, I believe, and these are the latest ones that are of a substantive nature. There are a lot of amendments that are just kind of cleaning up language within municipal code at spelling out letters and numbers, you know, that sort of thing. But as we go along today, feel free to ask questions while we're giving the presentation. So as not to have to go back in afterwards. And with the help of my clicker here. Go ahead and hit the next one, too. Okay. These are all, like I said, in Appendix A, voting. This is something that was proposed and actually came up recently with one member of city council being vacant. The current quorum, or the current majority vote, requires a majority of the entire council. That's even if only four members of council are present that day. So if there were only four members of council here today and there was a vote, it would require essentially 100% vote. So that changes the quorum from the entire council to majority members present. If I can go to the next one, please. And next. So that's the proposed change. You'll see that in red, underline bold. And then, of course, the bracketing part is the part that's being removed. Pretty straightforward. Excellent. Thank you.
So will that happen to be a something that we have to put on the ballot today?
So all of these will be able to be resolved by resolution of the council.
Okay.
So as we're going along, keep a note on which ones you would like to see or maybe would not like to see. We can then have direction to bring those back in the form of resolutions, either all at once or individually. Again, this is kind of a, this next one is a little bit of a housekeeping issue. Right now, it's supposed to be the presiding officer of council is supposed to cause the vote of the council, when in fact, it's the city clerk that does this role. So just cleaning up that language up. Next. And next. I had my staff help me with this to make it really exciting, and so far it looks really exciting.
Exactly.
Okay, so Section 3.13.1, this is going to add language as well as amend current language to define things such as work session, meeting times, the location, and also make allowance for virtual attendance. We'll discuss that more later, but this specifically is for work sessions. Next.
Will that be on the postings or on the agenda?
All of the above. In fact, go ahead and go to the next one. So this will define a work session, and you're going to see a lot of language here in a second of what a work session actually is.
I see.
And where it occurs and the times for these work sessions.
Okay.
And again. So what I just said already, next. There's the big language. So this is going to be almost all new language. This is, this will be a totally new statement. We will send these to you via email so that you can have a chance to look at them in closer detail, not expect to make a decision about the exact language tonight. But what this does is, like I said, it sets forth what a work session is, where it's located, and the dates and times thereof. I think I've heard. Yeah, please.
Can you go back to the slide before this one? It's the one where you outlined the two. Okay, it says work session meetings at the very bottom. It says defines meeting time 5:30 each first and third Monday, when in fact, we have work sessions every Monday.
Right, so that can obviously be a change of, this was what was proposed at the retreat and I think beforehand as well, but if we want to set work sessions for being every single Monday, that's a simple change as well.
Okay.
And then probably something that people don't notice is that we do carry on a work session on Tuesday if there is a holiday. And a lot of people don't, the public doesn't know that, but maybe we need to have it in writing somewhere unless we do already.
Okay. I don't know off the top of my head, but we'll definitely look into that, and if it needs to be, we'll add that in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the last sentence here, and we'll talk more about it later, is the allowance of council members to attend these work sessions and regular meetings and special meetings virtually via Zoom, Microsoft Teams, whatever IT decides is the best format. That is going to be a change. It's a lot more liberal than I think it may have been in the past. So we'll discuss that here a little bit. Go ahead, next. This is more of just about the agenda for the work sessions, how it's going to be set. Now. This is a change, and I've talked about it with some council members, but I wanted to make sure I pointed this out to everybody. Currently, if a council member wants a resolution or an ordinance placed on the agenda, they just place it on the agenda. This change would require any council members' ordinance or resolution to be presented at a work session first, to be discussed prior to then being put on the regular agenda. And I talked about it with some council members, and I got the feeling that it wasn't something that was necessarily liked or desired. It just seems to be, maybe, I know the intent is to have more information for council members so that they're not being blindsided by certain things. But it does put another step in the process of legislation that you're wanting to bring forward.
I guess council is going to have to think on that one. I think you have an opinion on it, don't you, Counselor Martinez?
Yeah, so I think that this is important for us to adopt. In my several years now on council, what I really like is when we have an opportunity to talk about it on the dais, both in an open meeting, and then also we get then staff recommendation, and we can have a full conversation on the dais in front of everyone. And it's not necessarily happening in an executive session or to one-off, you know, a phone tree that's happening about an ordinance or a resolution. So I think it increases transparency. The county actually has a very similar process to their meetings. So the county actually has a process where any type of ordinance or resolution has to have a work session prior for it to go on the agenda. So it would be a very similar process that we would be adopting similar to the counties.
I think that if we do that, we also need that from the administration, too. I mean, last week's, last time I was here, the it's on the schedule this week. It's about the runway out at the Honor Farm. That probably should have been open for discussion prior to it being posted. So I think that if we want to do something, if we agree to do this, it should be both administrative and council.
Mayor Graham, I think when we've talked about this in the past, you've been open to having, you know, certain ones in terms of not necessarily the ones that staff are providing, because that would take forever, because the agenda is so filled with what the ones that staff are providing. But I feel like you've been open to that in the past.
Yeah, and just for the record, that wasn't, my administration put that on the agenda last week. That's just the process of an easement and the council approving an easement. So that's just normal policy on how that was come through. So anything that staff or state departments put on, I don't necessarily think that needs a work session for that unless the council sees a fit on first reading that they would like a work session in between.
Yeah, the thing, the thing is, though, is that we never see anything until Thursday before. It's like things that come on to the agenda come on the Thursday before, unless we've talked about it previously, if it's a council thing. And counselors should always reach out if they are going to want to put something on the agenda. They should always reach out and talk to their fellow counselors and just let them know, hey, this is coming up. They don't have to legislate it over the phone, but they should at least let them know this is coming up. If you have questions, if you want a work session, and get a feel for the things going on, rather than just put it on the agenda. And so that's just, I guess we're going to decide what we're going to do here. But these are just all the things that we need to consider when we're doing them.
I think another good example is even when Mayor Graham was talking a little bit about, or was pushing forward for the pay, not for the pay, you did something earlier with the police department through an ordinance that was also a work session first. So we're all on the same page. We all get staff direction. You know what I mean? It's just another example.
I think it's when it's a big, you know, a big notion that we're asking for, it makes sense to have the work session so that the council can ask the staff or me, you know, what's coming up and why we're asking you to vote on something. I think that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and even before, if we decide not to collectively, the majority decides not to make the changes, the majority should really still consider the things that keep us from really moving forward, streamlining the process, and respecting everybody else's opportunity and/or time to think about what's being presented. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, next. Okay, currently, this would be a change to the notion of the executive committee and would allow city council to just appoint committees for purposes of what the executive committee would normally do. Go ahead and to the next one. The chairs of the committee would be appointed by the president of council for each committee. And then they would serve in an ad hoc capacity until the issue being studied or looked into is resolved. Yeah.
Yes. Is this for forming new committees that we don't already have, or is this saying that the president now is going to appoint all of the different members, like even like through resolutions, and it's no longer the mayor?
So the way I read this is, so that when council has an executive committee, it's going to do away with that model, and you're going to establish committee, ad hoc committees, either of council or council and staff or council and citizens.
I don't get it.
Pearl Sykes, do you have any more information on this one? Because this isn't something that was drafted up by us. But as far as membership goes, it would be appointed by council, not by just the president. The president of council would only appoint the chair of that committee.
So this was a change that, again, I was given when I, when I essentially took my position. My read of this is that if there is a an issue that comes up on council and council wants to investigate that or create a committee to study that, then council has the ability to create a committee for that particular issue. So it'd be sort of an ad hoc committee based upon what issues come up. So for instance, on the Medal of Honor Road and the model airplanes, if you wanted a committee to study the impact of the community based upon the failures for them to be able to fly their airplanes out there, you could create a committee to study that. Yes, Counselor.
I think you were kind of moving, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were moving in a direction of boards and commissions, weren't you? Because the boards and commission, when the citizens adopted the mayor form of government, gave sole responsibility for the appointment of boards and commissions to the mayor. And so that's a lot different. Those will always be controlled out of her office.
That's correct. This is more for issues before council, I think.
These are short-lived.
Ad hoc committees.
Yeah, and the mayor also has the ability to do this as well. So council would have the ability to do that to the extent that you wanted to on a particular issue.
No further questions? This is getting into electronic attendance of all meetings involving city council. Next, please. This is just the statement earlier in the Appendix A that allows members to attend electronically as provided here. And right now, it's covered by statute and case law that allows counselors to appear virtually. This would essentially codify it in our policies. Also, the rescheduling of meetings on a majority vote of the entire council. Next.
Can I ask a question on this topic here?
Go back, please.
When COVID hit, I, at that time, Dan Kogosik was our city attorney. And I remember asking him the question whether, at that time I was president, and I asked him the question, can I attend virtually? And he said, no, that there had to be at least one person that remained in attendance.
Right.
And the other six council members could could come on electronically. Is that not the case anymore?
Well, I believe, I believe what Mr. Kogosik was reading, and I would agree with him, is our charter says that meetings must be held here at City Hall. So to have a meeting, somebody needs to be present, whether it necessarily needs to be a council member or if it could be the city clerk. That would be up for debate, but what this allows is for individual participation via electronic, not necessarily an emergency or some situation where the entire council needs to appear virtually.
Okay.
And in order to have this, we're going to set forth rules for participation. Next. And there we go. So a lot of reading, essentially what this says is, these are the rules to appear virtually. It defines the word electronic participation. That's Zoom, Microsoft Teams, essentially any sort of two-way video that allows you to hear and be heard and to participate in the debate of council. Next.
Now, is that going to allow for if the system is bad that night? You know, something goes wrong with the system, a counselor is not going to be penalized for that?
It will be up to council to decide if that is an unexcused absence or an excused absence. The only way a council, I think, could be penalized is if it's an unexcused absence. And we do have procedures in Appendix A to determine if someone has an unexcused absence or an excused absence. Unexcused absence is two of those. You're automatically off council.
Correct. We know that.
Yeah.
But if we're working with electronic equipment and something goes bad, we don't, we just want to have it in writing that that counselor is not considered unexcused, I would think, if we're going to move forward with this.
Okay. I think we have a provision in there that states they will be considered absent for the remainder of the meeting. I will just add excused absence for the remainder of the meeting if they lose connection and can't be reestablished.
Okay.
So these are the four principles of electronic participation. Obviously, the first one is to be able to hear and provide maximum notice and participation. Number two, should have your cameras on so that you can be seen, so that we know that you're there actually participating. For executive session, you need to have a secure connection, and if any counselor is participating electronically, it would be roll call votes. Just because we would need to have that. I think we did that last week. So this is just putting into writing the procedure we pretty much already do now. Next, please. Okay, now this one here, I want to run by you.
Quick question.
What's that?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Last year, we had, this is for our clerk. Last year, we had the electronic voting system, you know, where we didn't, if you like zoomed in, you could just do that online. And I know that our system hated that system, and then that's why we got rid of it. Do we have an alternative to that?
I'll have to talk to IT. I'll talk to Lori Pinz. I'm not sure with the new system integration, how it's working, if we have that.
Okay.
Possibly. Let me find out for you.
Okay.
Okay, this one I wanted to bring to the attention of council because the way it's written, it does limit the reasons for electronic participation, those being health issues, personal emergency, or conflicting city obligation. So if you just didn't feel like coming into council meeting that night, that wouldn't be a justifiable reason to do electronic participation. However, it's council's decision. If you want this to be as liberal as possible, where you can pretty much virtually appear whenever you want, or if you want it to be for special occasions where if you're on paternal leave or parental leave, that's an example. Or if you are sick with some sort of cold that you don't want to spread to other people, a health issue. So I'm asking for feedback here, what council members might think as far as when you can electronically participate. Or if you're happy with those listed in the proposed amendment.
Well, they should be able to electronically participate if they're out of town.
Okay.
And that should be in there, because we're not, no one's home for four years, not possibly traveling.
Okay.
You know, so I think it should be added.
Would you want? Would you want necessarily to remove health issue, personal emergency, or conflicting, and just say if a counselor is unable to attend in person, that's the reason? Or would you want it more restrictive?
I don't think that we need to be even make restrictive.
This is for, what this is for is for emergencies. So I'm sorry, I was talking.
I think if they're unable to attend in person, that it's sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that should be.
I think the way he has it stated is fine.
All right.
So that means you wouldn't be able to go to Arizona and attend via meeting. You understand that, that it limits you. And you're okay with that now? I said, you're okay with that now? Okay, well then. We're just leaving it as you can unattend. If you can't, unable to attend, then we will, then it's, you're able to, yes. From anywhere.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. Next, this is just direction for city staff that upon receipt of a request to appear virtually, that city is going to do, they're going to provide resources to make sure that you're able to appear, not necessarily give you the technology, but Not necessarily give you the technology, but uh, make sure that you have the correct login and any sort of help you may need.
Okay.
Next. This is just saying when you should log on to Zoom, not really that controversial. Next. Oh, this does say here, city staff should attempt to re-initiate the connection if, if the connection is lost. So that puts again, the responsibility on city staff to continue to try to re-establish that connection throughout the meeting. Next. Yep, that's it. Okay, so that, those are the changes that we have to present to you. I feel like I've gotten direction from council. Would you like these to be brought back individually as resolutions to amend or?
I would rather you go back to the very beginning.
Okay, let's go back to the very beginning and we can go through them individually. Okay, starting with the first one, the majority vote of the members present as opposed to majority vote of the entire council.
And what would be the advantage of doing it that way?
Sure. So if you had two council members who were excused absences and there was a vote, under the way it's currently written, you would have to have a majority of the entire council, which would be four. This way, if there was only six or, or five, you'd only need three. There were five members of council on a night that a vote took place. According to our, uh, section eight, you would need a vote of four, even though there's only five people there, as opposed to three. So this just lowers the threshold to accurately represent what council's composition is that night.
Yeah, I, I don't like that, um, particular wording. I mean, council is made up of four districts and three at large. And in that sense, each seat has a vote. And so since each seat has a vote, it shouldn't matter whether there's five people here, four people here. Obviously, if there's three, we don't have a quorum and you can't have the meeting. So I mean, I, I don't see the advantage to the, to the public and to the process. And that's just my opinion. I mean, obviously it's up to council what they want to do, but I think it's always been four votes to pass anything and it should stay four votes to pass any. Isn't that a parliamentary Robert rule, a voter, a border? That if you have a council of seven people, uh, you need four votes to pass anything.
Correct.
And so.
So we default to Robert's rules when there isn't something clear in the policy and procedures. Our policy and procedures is clear in that any vote in order to pass must have a majority of the entire council, whether the entire council is there or not. And I think, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how this came about, but I, I assume that it was, for instance, where we have one seat that's absent. And if we had two members who were gone on vacation or not able to make the meeting, you have four, you'd, you'd necessarily need a four unanimous vote to pass anything as opposed to three. So that's the best I can.
Only three people show up, uh, an ordinance could pass two to one.
Well, yeah, if, if five were to show up, you could pass it three to two.
I, I don't like that at all.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think you should always have four votes, uh, no matter how many people show up. Obviously, you gotta have four people before you do any business, but you'd have to have a perfect night of four zero on that evening.
And I think that's why it's written the way it is. It, it may have been amended or this proposed amendment, I imagine is for convenience.
I could, I could see why. Um, so when we have like a three, three, it's dead, but it allows, because it wasn't a four three, it allows for the absent council member to come back, um, and rerun the ordinance.
Possibly.
No, it does. Cause we, we've done that before. And, um, and so is that something that we, you know, if somebody's not here and it fails, but they wanted it, then council has to go all the way through it again, the process again. I guess, I guess.
And even with six members, whether you have six or seven, it's still four. Really, this gets down to when you're under six, which hasn't occurred since, since I've been here, but it's possible. I think now with electronic participation, you're going to see this come up even less.
No, I was just wondering if that was something that, um, looking at it from that point of view, kind of a different subject. If, why we, why council has to go through it because a member didn't make it to the council meeting that night to vote? And why we have to go through it again because their vote was missed, you know? Okay. All right. Uh, you have a question?
Yeah, has CERSA or CML come down on a decision on any of this?
Uh, so all of these were taken, uh, or at least the majority of these were taken from a CML presentation that I, that I located. So for what it's worth, I think CML has weighed in on, on most of these.
Thank you.
So I, I'm kind of with Councilor Aleph and Councilor Flores. I don't think that that's one that we should change. That's just my.
That's fun. And I'm fine with that too. So would that mean that we're not, we're not gonna, we're just gonna strike that out? We're gonna move forward, correct?
Yeah, that's fine. It's gone. Right, yeah. Next.
Can I, I have.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
The seven years I've been on city council, it's, I would say that ninety-nine percent of the time there's been full participation. It's kind of rare. There was a couple of times, uh, that someone was very ill or, or we had a resignation or we had a death or somebody got, uh, elected as mayor, those kinds of situations. And, uh, but it's, it's really rare and we're really fortunate in Pueblo. I mean, everybody takes their job seriously. I wanted to ask a question on the committee and I'm sorry that I should have asked it when I, yeah, with the example that Mayor, um, Grant cited, does that mean that we could form a committee with employees like the issue she brought up with the, the, the model airplane strip? If, if it made sense to me to have a committee of maybe you, uh, as our city attorney, deputy city attorney and, uh, maybe Andrew Hayes and, and Scott Hobson. Uh, I, I guess the question is, all of these people work for the mayor, you know, we're just a legislative branch. Uh, does this give us the opportunity of forming a committee with current employees? Or do we need to get permission, I guess? Because I don't, that doesn't seem like the, it seems to me logical that we form a committee that we would want, uh, people that are professionals in that maybe one area.
Right, yeah, I, the, with the mayor being the head of the admin, uh, administrative branch, there's a, there's a rule that council doesn't direct the day-to-day activities of staff. This is something different, I believe, in that you're asking for a committee to return information, uh, study an issue, report back to council and council can be part of that discussion and presentation as well. So, yes, it is allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
The charter has always allowed us to create committees. And so I don't understand why we're, what's wrong with the way that the charter says?
Can we pull, can we pull the committee slide up?
I, as, what I assumed was that these had either been requested by council or had already been vetted by council at the retreat. Um, I cannot speak to why any of these were created.
Got it.
These were, these were on my desk. In fact, they were on Ms. Sykes' desk as well on our first days. So we're trying to just close the loop on these and figure out if we want to actually enact, if we, if council wants to enact any of these policies. So, um, again, you guys are the ones who said how you function. And if you don't like any of these or if you want changes, uh, feel free to ask. That's why we're here.
Madam, madam chair.
Yes. Go ahead.
I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Aleph and as relates to the governing body of the council, it's very similar in, in composite to the state legislature, United States Congress, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We have a mayor who, it's a strong mayor format. But we also have a, a council that has the, uh, veto power with a super majority. So, um, I want to make that particular point.
So my point on the advisory committee is the charter states that the city council made by resolution created committee or committees to advise and make recommendations to the city council in matters relating to the disposition of specific council affairs. All members of such committees shall serve without pay and for such term as the city council shall direct in the resolution creating the committee. Appointments to such committee may be by the mayor or with or without the consent of the city council or by the city council, as said, resolutions shall provide. So if I would change anything on the city council side of the advisory committee is, is to say that the mayor can't make appointments on the city council committee. Cause right above it, the mayor makes committee appointments at the mayor's discretion with or without the consent of city council. So it's almost like a, a upside down deal there. So if, if, if Council Meister wants to create a committee to study widgets and city council says, yeah, we think that'd be a great thing for you, you to do. And she's going to bring forth a resolution to create a committee. She knows who she wants on the committee. I don't think the president of city council should be appointing who's the president of the committee or whatever. If it's Council Meistries or Council Flores or Council Gomez, Latino, whoever, that's their committee. They are, they're leading the committee. And that's why I like what, what the charter says about the committee because it doesn't put in all that other, that other stuff of, you know, the president does this, the, the mayor does that. But I think in our charter, the way that it's written, and this has to be charter, thi- this has to go to a vote to change that. You can't just change this, I don't believe, without
What I think this.
By resolution.
Sure. What this is doing is it's defining the type of committee that city council is allowed to create. And what it does is it.
But the charter allows us to create any committee.
I know. I, hey, I'm not saying you should vote yes on this. I'm just the messenger on this guy. I don't know who.
Who can we yell at?
I, he doesn't work here anymore, I think.
Well, I think, um, earlier this year, didn't, under that same, same, um, chapter for there, didn't we have a situation where, um, we, the mayor still has to get approval from council for her committee members, even when she appointed committee?
I'd have to go back and look at the charter on that one.
So.
It's subject to count, the charter cheer clearly states that any committee that the mayor makes has to be confirmed by city council. That's what the charter says.
About this though, specific that, that this, um, new text, I'm okay getting rid of it and, um, moving on.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. And this is, I don't know how often city council meets as an executive committee anyway. So that's.
Sounds like President Aleph is going to start a bunch of committees.
Well, we have created over the years, several committees that have, have done really good work for city council. The way they were created was per the charter, which allowed us, gave us the power to create those committees. And as long as council agrees with your committee, then voila, you have a committee.
So just for time, I'm okay with getting rid of this.
Okay, you want to go to whatever would be next?
Strike it.
The only other question I had was on the executive sessions, was on work sessions.
Okay.
And they said they must be held in city council chambers. There's several times that we have, uh, uh, work. Said we've gone to the police department, we've gone to, to other places and had a.
A work session.
A work session that weren't held in council chambers.
Okay, I'm fine with striking that out. When I read that too, I thought that that kind of confined city council. So yeah, more than happy to remove that.
Anything else from council?
No, I'm lost.
Okay. You, did you want to go back to number nine and just kind of flip through them real quick?
Would you go to the next slide though? For the work session agendas, I don't know if we needed to look at that at all. Um, or this actually is council ordinances, council resolutions having to appear. Right. I know you and I have talked about that one before and I know, I know your feelings, but.
Well, I think, again, this is my personal opinion on this. Any city counselor has a right to put anything on the agenda that they want to. That's, that's in the charter. Uh, there does not have to be, nowhere in the charter does it say there needs to be a work session. There needs to be this process that takes place before that specific, uh, ordinance or resolution hits the agenda. The policy has always been, and that, and the, in the legislative process, the, the key is, is that there's a first reading on everything. If any counselor or specific counselors had anything that they wanted to talk about on a specific ordinance or resolution that came up on first reading, that's when they should make, when we review the agenda, the, the request to put it on next week's work session. Cause every time it comes up on first reading, the next meeting is a, is a work session only. And we have all night to talk about things. So if there's specific things that we want brought to the, and, and, and I think this pertains to the administration's ordinances or resolutions or whatever. Uh, that process is always, has always worked. And if you miss it in first reading and it gets sprung on you in second reading, that's not the person who brought forward the ordinance or resolutions fault. That's my fault for not catching it in first reading and saying, oh gosh, I wish I would have known more about this.
Right.
I mean, it's all part of our job is to understand that. So I don't again, for myself, I don't think that it's a good idea that every single ordinance coming from the mayor's office or from any of the administration or a city counselor should be mandated to have a work session.
Um, Council Martinez.
I understand what President Aleph is saying. I'm saying, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say, you know, take away anyone's power on, of bringing something forward. I'm saying that as, as a work session for chair for two years, what would happen is that, um, it, you know, Council Flores would pull something off and then Tracy and I would have to scramble to try and fit something into the work session, uh, schedule, whether that was calling, you know, other presenters from external, uh, partners or own staff, we're gonna, we're gonna have to scramble in the, in those next couple of weeks. If we do it this way, there's more time to plan. Um, it's less of a scramble for both the mayor's office and for the work session chair. Um, the, and then there were other times where the work session agenda would get too full for that, for that next week that we would have to then bump presenters who have been scheduled for months. And that, that's a feel bad, you know, that, that, that's, everyone should, you know, has been planning for months to come to speak here. And so if we can, if we can plan a little bit better by having just at least a week in advance of, hey, this is coming up, we're going to have a work session about it, we're all going to have an opportunity to learn. The public's going to be able to learn, um, and it's going to be transparent. And then also then, and then we don't have to pull necessarily as much off at the last minute. That's what I think can be really fixed here. So I'm, I'm asking for everyone's support in passing this.
Or moving it forward, just move it forward and then we can vote for it at the time. And, uh, you know, we'll put it in front of us to vote for. I would like to, um, agree with, uh, the things that Councilor Martinez says, that if we get to a first reading and we see something we can't all. we get to a first reading and we see something, we can't always move it to the next work session. But I think at this point, um, we're just gonna have to, I mean, that's our time, work sessions are our time the following week. And if we're here till 10 o'clock at night, listening to something that somebody needs to learn something on, that just might be an addition we have to make. You know, don't ever be, don't ever want to move forward. And even though we're pushing for time, anybody on Council without trying to bring somebody to the table.
Right. And that's, I mean, in the past couple of years, we've got, with work session has gone really late because we've had like six different work sessions on one night. But I'm, I'm just saying that in those instances where we have had to um, either pull staff in at the last minute or pull a community partner. Um, you know, that, that wants to come speak at a work session because they're the subject matter expert, then they also have to scramble to come in in the next week. And that's not always feasible for people who have working jobs. So. Yeah.
Yeah. And if you're bringing something forward from here on Council, at least reach out to your fellow counselors and ask if they feel that they also need a work session on it. So. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
You want to just click through them and maybe it'll jog memories as we go?
Yeah, just finish clicking through them, please.
Uh, we already removed that one. And that's removed as well. Keep going. And this is just our electronic participation. Uh, we do electronic participation already. This is just kind of codifying the process. But it-
Correct.
Certainly if we don't agree to put this in, it's not going to remove the ability to.
Well, we'd like to codify it, but we just don't need all that detail, I think. Is.
On this one though, I, I do want to say that we will take out the, the reasons for attendance or for inability to attend. And just say if a counselor is unable to attend and leave it at that. Anything else? Alrighty. And again, if there's anything that you guys feel like you would like to change, just feel free to reach out to me directly. Um, and I'll work with you to get, to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll be moving into executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to go into executive session for a conference with the City Attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24 dash 6 dash 402, parent four, parent B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes to discuss response to pending litigation relating to ordinance 10698 and ordinance 10703.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 It's seven ten P M on Monday, June tenth and we are adjourning the work session meeting. We'll be returning in ten minutes.
Thank you for joining us today.